Okay, if everybody take a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. Again, sorry for the late start. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The planning board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosehacker Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Eric England Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. Cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the planning board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room, and there are no changes to the consent agenda. So I'm going to get started with the reading of those. Agenda item number four, case C-12-22-244, applicant Sean Nagus with Ponca Trails LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Ponca Trails, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to section 53-82G pavement width, 53-99 sidewalks, 53-82B cul-de-sac length, 53-93 street surfacing to allow asphalt pavement and to waive installation of curb and gutter, 53-96 storm sewers, and 53-910 streetscape standards to reduce street lighting. This was laid over from our October meeting of 2022. Location, 14222 Calhoun Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number five, case C-10-23-24, C-12-23-25, applicant Alcorn Public Schools. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Iron Bluff South and final plat approval of Iron Bluff South Lot 1, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R5. This was laid over from our February 1st meeting. Location, southeast of George B. Lake Parkway and I Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number six, case C-8-22-166, C-10-22-169, applicant Lanahaw Nurseries, Inc. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from AG to DR with approval of a special use permit to allow agricultural sales and service in the DR District. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. This was laid over from our June of 2022 meeting. Location, northeast of 258th Plaza and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed?
Yes, please remove.
Okay, it will be Bob, and it'll be put back on the agenda. Agenda item number seven, case C-8-22-255, C-7-22-259, applicant Sean Nagus with Ponca Trails LLC. It is on for layover. Request approval of a special use permit to allow development located within the North Hills Environmental Resource Overlay District, along with approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to section 55-883Q to allow a stable in the DR District. This was laid over from our October 2022 meeting. Location, 14222 Calhoun Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C-10-21-9, C-12-21-10, applicant Celebrity Homes Omaha. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Deercrest North, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from DR to R4. Location, southeast of 114th and State Streets. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 12, case C-10-23-48, C-12-23-49, applicant Hagan Hills LLC. It is on for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Hagan Hills, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. A portion of the property is located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location, northeast of 168th Street and Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-10-23-50, C-12-23-51, applicant Brookstone Meadows, Inc., Vetter Senior Living. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Brookstone Meadows Replat 3, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from AG and R7 to R7, along with approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location, southeast, excuse me, southeast of 204th and Harney Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-10-23-52, C-12-23-53, applicant Indian Creek North LLC. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Indian Creek Preserve, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R3. Location, southeast of 204th and Fort Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. I gotta get some water here. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-23-54, applicant Edna Francis. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GC to R435. Location, 405 and 411 Bancroft Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 16, case C-10-23-55, applicant James Simola. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to NBD. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location, 2219 South 13th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C-10-23-56, applicant GNIX Montclair on Center LLC. It is on for approval. Request approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location, 13105 West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-10-23-57, applicant, hope I say it right, Aberotis Alba LLC. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to CC. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location, 3510 South 24th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-23-59, C-10-21-155, applicant Drew Sova. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from HI to CBD, along with approval of a major amendment to the Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement District and repeal of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location, 1107 and 1113 Nicholas and 1001 North 12th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C-11-5-178B, applicant Brookstone Meadows, Inc., Vetter Senior Living. It's on for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to the Plan Unit Development Overlay District. Location, southeast of 204th and Harney Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 22, case C-8-23-60, applicant Gabriella Martinez. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow Daycare Services General to be located in the R435 District. Location, 3252 Monroe Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 23, case C-8-19-127, applicant McNeil Company Builders. It is on for approval. Request approval of special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location, 10409 North 72nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 24, case C-8-23-61, applicant CH Engineering, Inc. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the presumed special use permit pursuant to section 55-883Q to allow major utility facilities in the DR District with a waiver to section 55-108 height to allow a 62-foot tall structure. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location, northeast of 120th and Fort Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 25, case C-8-23-63, C-10-23-62, applicant David Schaefer. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow automotive sales in the GC District with approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location, 1941 South 42nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 26, case C-8-23-65, C-7-23-66, C-10-23-64, applicant Matterphilius of Nebraska, Inc. On for approval. Request approval of special use permit to allow large group living in the R4 District. Approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to section 55-883Q to allow religious assembly in the R4 District and approval of the rezoning from R435 to R4. Location, 5912 South 36th Street and 3614 Y Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 27, case C-7-23-67, applicant Nodle Companies. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow outdoor entertainment in the CBD. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location, 724 North 16th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 28, case C-7-23-68, C-10-23-71, applicant Aslan Companies. It's on for layover. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC District with approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location, 14441 and 14505 Dupont Court. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 29, case C-14-23-69, applicant Douglas County. It's on for approval. Request approval of the vacation of the Hayden Street and 117th Street right-ofways located north of State Street, south of Rainwood Road, east of 120th Street, and west of Blair High Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 30, case C-14-23-70, applicant Douglas County. It's on for approval. Request approval of the vacation of a portion of Rainwood Road located west of 84th Street to its western terminus. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. I think that's it. Do we have a motion for the consent cases that... Okay, I will. Okay, I just read through all the consent cases. Uh, one was pulled off, agenda item number six. No others were pulled off. That's fine. You don't, you can leave them on, pull them off. But if you leave them on consent, no further action will be taken today. If they're on for layover, then it'll be a month or two months or whatever down the road. But if they're on for approval, they'll be approved, and no further action for approval or layover will be taken today. So... If everybody's got that, any questions?
For the layover cases, if they are back on next agenda, we do not send new notifications to neighbors. If you are here for one of those cases, you can just call into the Planning Department, probably about mid-March, you know, give us about a week, week and a half before we set the the next agenda for the April meeting. But they can check in with us, and we can tell you if it is on for April. If it is on a later May or later, then we would send new notifications.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent items that were on for approval?
Motion to approve case numbers 5, 12, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 29, and 30.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Thirty-seven zero.
Did you get everybody?
Did I say?
I'm a yes.
Did you get everybody, Debbie?
I think so.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion for the consent items that were on for layover?
Motion to layover cases 4, 7, 11, 13, 14, 21, and 28.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin? Yes. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, those that were left on consent, no further action will be taken today. You are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. It's up to you. Oh, I'm choking. Yeah. Okay, we're going to change things before we get to the administrative. We got agenda item number 31, case C-7-17-175, C-7-21-121, C-7-22-26, applicant Malibu Properties LLC, West Omaha Sports Complex LLC. Request conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC District along with a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development. Location, generally southwest at 210th Street and Cumberland Drive. Eric?
Yeah, so just for those in the audience on your agenda, it's actually in reference to the last item under discussion. There's no specific 31, but it is in our packet on number 31. So... Yes, obviously, this is before you. This is not a public hearing, although if the board wants to hear from the applicant or the property owner, they have that right to call them up. I would just say that it's not really meant for a full-blown public hearing discussion, but there can definitely be a statement made or if you had a specific question. So yes, this item is before you today to determine whether the item should be placed on the April Planning Board agenda for a show cause hearing. There are two approved conditional use permits and a parking adjustment related to the UBT Sports Complex at 210th and Cumberland. We've discussed this in detail with the board. I won't get into all those details. If you do have questions, let me know. But the Planning Department recommends that the Planning Board move to schedule a show cause hearing on April 5th, 2023, at the regular Planning Board meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thirty-seven zero.
Okay, the two, first two agenda items are administrative only. There will be no opportunity for public input, public testimony. Agenda item number one, case C-10-23-22, C-12-23-23, applicant Alcorn Public Schools. Request final plat approval of Ida Point West, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R5. Location, northwest of 196th Street and Stone Avenue. And Eric, you're up.
Yeah, so this is a final plat approval of Ida Point West. This actual case has rushed through the entitlement process as the Planning Board did recommend approval of the preliminary plat back on February 1st. The City Council did approve that plat at yesterday's meeting. The final plat submittal is compliant with... The final plat submittal is compliant with all the regulations and master plan requirements. There are a few minor changes that adjusted the outlot on the east side to shift the right-ofway so it abuts the adjacent property as well as providing a temporary cul-de-sac for the turnaround. This will be an elementary school within the Elkhorn School District. One item to note is that this plat will not be able to be recorded until the Avante plat directly to the south has been recorded, so I just wanted to point that out. That was not in the report last month. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A.G. to R-five. Approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
With approval of the rezoning from A.G. to R-five and approval of the final plat subject to a submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto City Council for my motion.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
So Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Room seven zero.
Agenda item number two, case C-ten, dash, twenty-one, dash, two-oh-nine, C-twelve, dash, twenty-one, dash, two-ten. Applicant Westwood Solutions LLC. Request final plat approval of State and Highway one-thirty-three addition, lot three, outlot C, a subdivision outside city limits with approval of rezoning from A.G. to G.I. Location northwest of State Street and Blair High Road. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat is the next phase for this light industrial user northwest of Blair High Road and State Street. This was on Planning Board back in January for the preliminary plat and approved by City Council February seventh. This phase incorporates the previously platted lot, so it includes one larger lot as well as one outlot. The phasing plan has been modified since the preliminary plat was before the Board, but is acceptable. There are just a few items that we'll continue to work with the development team on as far as coming to an acceptable final subdivision agreement before City Council, which includes tree mitigation plans as well as several other documents. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A.G. to G.I. Approval of the final plat subject to the three conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Recommend approval of the rezoning from A.G. to G.I. and approval of the final plat subject to the three conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
So Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Room seven zero.
Agenda item number three, case C-three, dash, twenty-three, dash, forty-three. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the twenty-twenty-three consolidated action plan. This was laid over from our February meeting. Location City of Omaha in the three-mile extra territorial jurisdiction. Kelly, you're up.
Mr. Chair, sorry, Kelly, I'm gonna repeat myself on...
Okay, let the record show that Sidney Franklin is leaving the chambers.
Good afternoon. Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the Planning Department. Along with me are Alyssa Solachuk and Greg Paskech from the Planning Department as well. So with our twenty-twenty-three annual action plan is about, it's a little over a hundred pages, so in the interest of time, I'm just gonna cover some highlights unless there are any questions. So the purpose of this annual action plan is to provide a concise summary of actions, activities, and specific federal and non-federal resources that will be used each year to address the priority needs and goals identified within our city's consolidated plan. Our most recently adopted consolidated plan spans fiscal years twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-three, and this is the fifth and final year of that consolidated plan. The three programs that are, receive funding under this plan are our Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant, E.S.G. Unfortunately, we received our final allocation on Monday, and it has gone down from previous years and less than estimated. I will go over the different programs that we're recommending for here in a second. Generally, in terms of our process, it began over a year ago with an RFP for CDBG home and E.S.G. assistance was issued. We received applications for the funding, reviewed those, and put together our slate of projects and programs identified for funding. A draft of that plan was made available on the city's website, and then in August, a public hearing was, was hosted by us, and our public comment period started. It lasted for thirty days. Twenty-three individuals and one organization provided comments. Like I said, Monday, we received our final allocation, so our final dollar amounts, and we need to submit this action plan to HUD by April twenty-seventh. For CDBG funding, on the column on the left is the general goal, which this funding goes towards in our plan. The middle column is a specific project, and then the dollar amount on the right. The red text indicates a new project from twenty-twenty-two, and green text indicates that there is an increase from twenty-twenty-two funding. Just the normal text is no change from the prior year. So we are recommending funding for our Choice Neighborhoods South project, Y Street Improvements, Phase Two, which would construct Y Street where it does not currently exist. So this is a new, a new project. Previous year, we allocated funds for the engineering for this, for this phase. Our city-managed single-family rehabilitation programs, we have several of them, so exterior home rehabilitation, accessibility, energy conservation, healthy homes, emergency repairs, and a senior home repair program. So we're increasing, recommending increasing our funding for these programs. They are always in demand. We were just talking earlier about how our timelines are very, very wonky. We've actually allocated funding for the entire year already for our exterior rehabilitation program. The program is just so much in, in demand and so much in need. With our other single-family rehabilitation programs would be roofs for seniors, and that would be administered by Project Houseworks. Slum and Blight Elimination, we're continuing funding for our demolition program and code enforcement. Financial and home education through family housing advisory services, advisory services, and a job training and preparation program through Catholic Charities. It's a micro-business and asset development program. It is new this year because it wasn't funded last year, but it's been funded years prior to that. There is a separate category for CDBG public services funding, which is called out specifically because we have a fifteen percent cap of our overall allocation we can allocate to public services. These are all within the job training and preparation goal, and the specific projects are the Step Up Omaha Youth Employment Program with the Empowerment Network, Latino Center of the Midlands Workforce Education and Innovation Initiative, Way to Work with the Salvation Army, and the Nebraska Maintenance Academy. That one is the only new program, so that reflects new funding, and then decreased funding for the Step Up program. With our home program, we are looking at recommending funding for the Choice Neighborhoods North target area housing. This would provide for new construction, single-family, as well as the Adams Park scattered site housing. Our other family rehabilitation programs is through also Project Houseworks. It's an ermine homestead program to do a complete rehab of a home and then sell it. With multifamily housing new construction, there are two projects in Council Bluffs. It seems odd as though we're recommending funding for Council Bluffs, but we are in an overall consortium with them for the metropolitan area, which is the, you know, rationale for allocating funds to Council Bluffs. Our Choice Neighborhoods North, specifically for Kennedy Square West Phase, and then our Choice Neighborhoods South, this would be our first phase for South Side Terrace On-Site Phase One, our first housing phase related with that fifty-million-dollar grant we recently received. We also have a rental rehabilitation program. We're recommending increased funding for that program and continuing funding for a tenant-based rental assistance program with the Omaha Housing Authority. Our emergency solutions funding focuses more on homelessness and homelessness services. There is a information management service we could recommend continuing funding for, and then emergency shelter, specifically with Catholic charities, Santa Frances House and Stephen Center, and then rapid rehousing programs partnership with Heartland Family Service and Together. Unfortunately, we see decreases in this column only because we are receiving less funding than we have previously. So in summary, we have a little over six-point-nine million dollars across these three programs, which will assist in the construction or rehabilitation of one thousand, one-hundred-and-sixteen housing units, over six thousand persons, and thirty-five businesses. So this annual action plan was guided by our consolidated plan as well as public input, and the final allocation amounts were, again, provided on Monday, and our plan is due April twenty-seventh. And I will, am available if there are any questions.
I think you answered most of them upstairs.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kelly? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
Thanks.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, a closed public hearing? Eric?
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, there's a, there's several planners and individuals within our Community Development Division that put in a lot of hard work and effort. You know, that's the division that Kelly leads, so I just wanted to show appreciation to, you know, it's an ever-changing target and new numbers that just come out a couple of days ago from the federal government, so there are challenges, but these programs are all to great benefit. Staff recommends approval.
Kate, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Page?
Yes.
So Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Room six zero.
Mike, will you let Sidney know that she can come back? Let the record show that Sidney Franklin has come back to the chambers. Agenda item number six, case C-eight, dash, twenty-two, dash, one-sixty-six, C-ten, dash, twenty-two, dash, one-sixty-nine. Applicant Lannahaw Nurseries, Inc. It was on for approval. It was taken off. Request rezoning from A.G. to D.R. with approval of a special use permit to allow agricultural sales and services in the D.R. District. Portions of the property are located within the flood fringe overlay District. This was laid over from our June twenty-twenty-two meeting. Location northeast of two-hundred-and-fifty-eighth Plaza and West Center Road. And Larry, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, one-hundred-and-fourteen, forty, Western Road, appearing on behalf of Lannahaw Nurseries. This, as you know, is on the agenda for approval on the consent agenda. When I got down here, Bob Peterson was here, and he asked me if we could do something to the site plan, and we can't accommodate him, so kind of want to show you that. And then, so, this is the property outlined in black. It's all Lannahaw Nursery's property, and Bob Peterson's client has this property right here, and apparently he trains colts at that location. So if you looked at the site plan, this is going to be wood waste recycling to essentially make mulch and also a soil improvement restoration operation. And so we had a building at this location, and all of the wood recycling and soil improvement restoration was going to occur at this location, but that's where the gentleman trains his horses here. And Bob Peterson asked if we could simply flip the site, have the building move to the south, and the operations move to the north, and we are completely fine with that. The property is a virtual rectangle that's completely flat, and my understanding is then Mr. Peterson's client doesn't have any opposition to this particular use. So with that, hopefully, we can make a recommendation to approve of the project as flipped, and it'll just mirror itself. But with that, I'll ask Bob Peterson if he has anything to add.
Okay, hold on, Larry.
Oh, sure.
No, go ahead. You're done, but...
Oh.
I was gonna say, are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Well, I guess maybe I should ask Bob, are you an opponent now or a proponent?
I don't know that I'm a proponent, but I'm not an opponent, so...
Okay.
Yeah, that, that satisfies, you know, oh, Robert F. Peterson. I'm an attorney, one-four-seven, four-seven, California Street, and I represent the property owner, Denny Lane, who's immediately to the west of the applicant's property. And Larry's offered the accommodations that we were requesting, and with that, we don't have any opposition to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bob. I guess since I called him an opponent, are there any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, a closed public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? I just have one comment. Larry, thank you for working with Bob and getting this done so easily.
Absolutely. It's not often that you have a perfectly rectangular site that's flat. So that works really, that works really well, actually, so, yeah, we have no problem with that. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, so I don't need to get into several of the details of the site. There will be a certain distance off of Western Road that will be paved as well as some of the parking areas. It's not a heavily staffed site, more so just trucks bringing material and then the occasional grinding into that material, into the mulch. I do want to point out the site is within, is entirely within the flood fringe overlay District, and so there is a requirement to elevate the portion of the site or protect with berms for the materials on-site that are dangerous and buoyant in the case of flooding events. So those materials would be trees, the larger trees and tree limbs. The products such as mulch and soil will not have to be elevated to that extent because if there was a flood event, you know, those floating away is not usually injurious to property, other properties or humans nearby. But those larger tree limbs and tree product would have to be elevated and have the necessary floodplain development permit in place for those. So I did want to mention that staff is acceptable to the changes that could occur with a revised site plan before proceeding to City Council. I would recommend that we are gonna, I'm gonna change the wording on condition number three, which as it states right now, it's compliance with the submitted site plan. So I will read the recommendation. Whoever makes the motion, if you are acceptable to that wording, you can always say as stated by the city in the recommendation rather than trying to repeat word for word. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A.G. to D.R. Approval of the special use permit to allow agricultural sales and service in the D.R. District, subject to the six conditions in the report with a modification to number three to state prior to forwarding to City Council, submittal of an updated site plan reflecting the changes discussed in the public hearing of the Planning Board.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from A.G. to D.R. Approval of special use permit to allow agricultural sales and service in the D.R. District, subject to the six conditions report, as modified verbally here in the chambers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
So Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Room seven zero.
Agenda item number eight, case C-seven, dash, fifteen, dash, one-fifty-three. Applicant Lord of Life Lutheran Church. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R-one District. This was laid over from our July twenty-twenty-two meeting. Location two-oh-eight, forty-four Bonanza Boulevard. And may we hear from the applicant, please?
Joe Kattulak, architect with RDG Planning and Design, located at thirteen-oh-two Howard Street.
I couldn't hear your name.
Joe Kattulak.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Yep. As part of the layover process, we were directed to have additional communication with homeowners in Skyline Ranches. We provided two additional opportunities, two open houses, one in July, a second in October. The July open house was attended by approximately seventy individuals. The October, about thirty. At that July meeting, we walked the property, kind of marked out where the potential expansions would occur on the north side of the existing building, and walked through the, the current facility, showing some of the classrooms and some of the meeting spaces that are currently exist on-site. With that October meeting, it was really a follow-up to some additional questions that were posed after that July open house, as just kind of additional discussion and dialogue with about thirty individuals that were at that open house. Since that time, we've decided to not make any amendments to what we originally proposed in July, understanding that what we're putting before you is a master plan and kind of the hopes and the dreams of the church, and understand that there are realities of today's financing and just how the church grows over the next several years, that we wanted to understand what our maximum allowable would be. And given that that was recommended for approval at the last July hearing, we did not make any modifications, but understand that we will continue to communicate and work with the, the homeowners of Skyline Ranches as we move forward with any potential project.
Joe, when you shared that with the neighbors, that you weren't gonna make any changes, were there any comments about that?
There were questions regarding how we got to the initial size of, of the project Currently, we, we show one hundred and thirty-one parking stalls on site. We would be required, given the size of the worship space, to only provide a hundred. Now, whether we provide a hundred and thirty or a hundred really has impacts on how much impervious coverage. There's also a dollar associated with every parking stall, so if we can provide more green space and not have to park a hundred and thirty, you know, at, at the completion of, of the master plan, then that may be a route that we take. But at this point, we just want to understand what our, what the maximum we could do on site is, and then sort of peel back from there.
Is the, is the church realizing some increase in congregation numbers?
Yes, they are.
Maybe one of, I don't care which, which one might want to come up to address the question, but what kind of growth would you anticipate in, in the future as well? Are you talking ten percent a year? Are you talking more? Do you know?
We're gonna need your name and address.
Pastor David Lynn Kugel, 20844 Bonanza Boulevard, Lord of Life Lutheran Church. It's really hard to quantify, especially coming out of COVID, where, you know, we have online worship as well as in-person worship. We had, I don't know, Pastor Caleb, you know, a number as far as percent growth over the last, last couple of years.
Last five years, we've had about probably thirty-three percent.
Yeah, about thirty-three percent over the last five years.
And, and so with the planned expansion that you have before us today, is that going to be adequate, then, do you think, for anticipated future growth, five years from now, ten years from now?
Yes, with, you know, again, multiple services using the space.
And parking?
And parking, yeah, as Joe addressed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions? Eric? I just want to thank, I just want to thank you for taking the time to meet with the neighbors. It's, it's always a very important thing when things change in neighborhoods. Nobody likes change, and the more opportunities they have to ask questions, I understand it's always much easier. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, so the only thing, there are a few waivers that are associated with, is typically supported when we have civic uses within residential districts, so that includes the impervious coverage, especially with the underlying zoning. You know, being R1, those have very low numbers of building and impervious coverages, as well as very large setbacks. So the, the other waivers are related to setbacks, which is a, at a distance from what you would not typically see for any parking lot of any other church or school or, or operation. So it's, it's unique, and for those reasons, we do support those waivers, which will need to be approved by the zoning board of appeals. Staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R1 district, subject to the eight conditions in the report.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
To allow religious assembly in the R1 district, subject to the eight conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Solongo? Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro 7-0.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, case C seven dash zero-zero dash two fifty, C ten dash twenty-two dash three twenty-six. Applicant Rob Cooksey requests approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R four district, along with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. This was laid over from our December 2022 meeting. Location, 15656 Fort Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Zach Ferguson, Lamprey Neerson, 147 Ted, 10, West Dodge Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, Rob Cooksey, head of schools at Concordia, and also Lee Hanke, Board Chair. As you can see on the site plan here, this is a project about both renovating the interior of Concordia, as well as expanding based on new enrollment and, and projected growth. So, school site, thirty-seven acres situated on the northwest corner of 156 and Fort. Current enrollment with Concordia, a hundred and eighty-one students K through five, a hundred and sixty-five students six through eight, and also three hundred and six students nine through twelve. This proposed expansion will incorporate two new building entrances, one that you can see here on the southwest, and then the K through five entrance on the northwest of the existing building, as it sits today. This expansion will incorporate a hundred and fifty to two hundred new parking spaces. Again, just as was mentioned with the last case, dependent on pricing and budgets under the current, current price of concrete. At the request of the city, this site plan shows the closure of the current driveway on Fort Street, and relocation to an existing driveway that has been paved as a part of the 158th Avenue right away. So we will be tying in our main drive into the school site further west. This aligns with the city's desire to have only quarter-mile accesses. This closed, that closes that driveway, which was an eighth mile. We did, we appreciate the layover in December, allowed us to meet with neighbors on January 26th. Fielded many questions, a lot of it focused around that driveway closure. We have performed a traffic study, and that has been provided to Public Works, that is currently in review. That'll go final once we receive comments back on that. Yep.
So during the meeting, you said most of the conversation was around that other access point.
Yes.
Because of the stacking?
Was that a concern that they were raising, or what were the, what were the questions that they raised?
General traffic concerns, as, as we see with most, most projects adjacent to residential.
So general draft, general traffic in that, in that area?
Yes, yes.
Not necessarily directed towards any flaws in the?
We, by moving the, the drive closer to the neighborhood, that, of course, was a concern with the neighbors. Based on the layout of the street network around us, and again, needing to comply with that quarter-mile access, we, we don't have a lot of give on where we can tie in to a public, public road for the school. It is a school, it's got pickup, it's got drop-off, it's, it is busy. We are able to accommodate a lot of our stacking internally. We have two parent drop-offs, one on the north and one on the south, and then a, a pretty healthy queue length internal to the site.
That's actually a comment, this site plan, there's more, there's more internal queue there than probably any school I've ever seen.
Yes.
So that should be a, a good thing for the neighbors. And what's the enrollment, like six?
There's something. Six fifty.
And growing.
And growing.
Okay. Anything else, Rob? I mean Zach.
No.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, thank you. My name's Rob Cooksey, 14714 Crown Point Avenue. I am the head of schools at Concordia. I'm here as a proponent, and I'm here just to answer any questions that you might have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Good afternoon, I'm Lee Hanke, 5603 North 160th Avenue. I'm the current board chair for Concordia Lutheran Schools of Omaha, here to voice my support for the project and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Okay, come on down. Make sure you give your name and address, please.
My name is Molly Mazur, and I am representing myself as an adjacent homeowner at 5505 North 160th Avenue. And this is my first time, so please be gentle.
I'm nice, but the rest of them are pretty.
Yeah, they was going over there. No, first, I'd honestly like to thank Zach. Zach and I have been in correspondence since I learned of this project in November, and he has provided a lot of information and been very helpful. Unfortunately, the information he shared hasn't done nothing to quell my concerns. I guess based on this map, I am located right here. Share this other one, because I think it is more helpful. So, existing entrance off Fort Street will be closed. All traffic, based on my understanding, will be redirected to a new driveway. I know that they've set the driveways there, it's more of a, a tiny concrete apron right here, and this is my house right here. So arguably, the most impacted homeowner in the neighborhood, as there will be a new entrance thirty feet from my backyard. My house sits far back on the site, and unfortunately, will be very close to that entrance. Here is the existing apron. The road will be extended beyond the apron, and that white house is my house, so. So I have some concerns. Initially, in the, well, in every mailing from the city, the fact that the Fort Street entrance will be closed was never addressed. At the planning meeting that Zach referenced that I attended, that was new information to almost everyone attending, and of great concern, because we're, you know, taking a tiny street that already gets backed up all the time, and relocating seven hundred students plus staff, going through this, this small area every day. And I've been anxious to see the results of the traffic study. I understand that those are not public yet, but I'm concerned, because my understanding it was conducted in a January day, and this is Stone Creek. Stone Creek is open March through November, and has approximately two thousand people visiting a day. And so I don't see how a traffic study done in January accurately reflects what the traffic pattern of this neighborhood really is most of the year. I did contact Stone Creek. They had concerns, they were unaware of this. I did contact our HOA, they were concerned and did not, were not aware of the closure, and I did contact the SID, and they were also unaware of the closure, and I, I think met with Mr. Ferguson yesterday.
What was Stone Creek's concern?
With the increased traffic, and not knowing what the proposal is, if there will be a light on Fort Street, if there will be, kind of how this will be handled. I think scale is hard to see here, but it really is a tiny two-lane road, and I can see with, you know, seven hundred people arriving twice a day. I think it's also important to note that this is not only a school, it's a church. So this isn't a, you know, burden at eight o'clock and three o'clock, this is seven days a week. I applaud Concordia, and they have a, a very active student body, but people are coming and going all the time. And currently, on football days, people park in this little apron area right here, and often venture into my backyard, often throw their trash can, or bottles and cans down onto our patio. We asked Concordia what, you know, attempts that they're going to make at keeping this area clean, if they're, if they would be willing to do any sort of landscaping around here to add trees to kind of mitigate light and noise pollution. As far as I know, they've been unwilling to do anything like that. Talked with several real estate agents, all have noted that there will be a significant diminution in my property value due to this influx of traffic on this new road. Ultimately, I'm all for development, I'm excited about their project, I am just not excited about it, aboutting my backyard. And I think my final point is, I know that this is a city requirement, and I understand the quarter of a mile drive requirement. What I don't understand is why the same requirements not being enforced for this entrance. This is also less than a quarter of a mile off a street, this is 156th Street right here. It's one-way, both ways, there's no turning lane, and my understanding is the city is willing to grandfather this entrance in, but not the main entrance that arguably has a turn lane, and, you know, similarly doesn't meet the quarter of a mile requirement. But cities requiring closure of this and creation of this entrance, but nothing here when arguably they're, both violate city code equally, or recommendations, I guess, I don't know if it's code or a recommendation.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes.
So, you've lived, how long have you lived here?
About six years.
Okay. So you have seen school traffic, obviously, over that time, right?
I do. I mean, it, not through our neighborhood, but.
Right, right. But, but along Fort Street, have you ever seen any cars backed up onto Fort Street during pickup and drop-off times?
Not along Fort Street. I do know that there is a challenge turning left out of there, and so a lot of times, people will turn right out of the school, going down for it, and then they'll turn left to go through kind of a townhome neighborhood.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I'm fairly familiar with schools and school flows and what have you, and, and traffic patterns. And actually, the way it's proposed is a much better traffic flow for those along Fort Street particularly, because I live close to Kiwett Middle School. 156th Street is a parking lot, right?
Sure.
Because it's only two lanes right now. At school, drop-off time.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely, like I said.
And that's a concern as this school continues to grow that I have with regards to Fort Street. So moving that actually, I think, improves the traffic flow quite a bit. It will in the future. And the other thing, too, is, is you said that people are parking in that apron right now? Well, that, that's, that's designed there for a reason. It's an extension to what was anticipated to be an additional traffic lanes, traffic lanes, leading into something particular to the school there. So that was going to happen eventually anyway, and, and now you're not going to have any beating parking there, because there will be a free flow of traffic.
Yeah, now there'll just be a few thousand cars a day going through that.
And then the other question is, do you know how many people that live in your general neighborhood, in your vicinity there, attend, how many kids attend that school?
I believe that people directly across 158th Street attend, which actually, they might be too young, so they may be attending the elementary school, but.
And where I'm going with that is, is, are there, how many of, of, of the kids that attend that school actually live in that neighborhood, or are they being transported from other areas of the city?
I, I don't have that information, I think that would probably be something better.
And that gets to some of the traffic concerns that you might have with regards to traffic going through the neighborhoods as well, is I think the only people that'll go through your neighborhood from the school will be those that live in that neighborhood.
I, I guess I, I disagree, I consider entering in the Stone Creek entrances right here, entering into the neighborhood, so.
You mean to pick, to pick up those kids? Or drop them off?
I mean, to me, this is the neighborhood. This is the entrance into Stone Creek.
Right.
No. Oh, I mean, we have people going to their homes or going to the golf course, but we don't have people going to the school.
Right.
Because there's not currently access.
That's all I have, thank you.
And then, has the board seen the traffic study and any recommendations?
We're gonna bring Ryan Haas down with Public Works in, in a little bit.
Okay. I've talked with Ryan as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other opponents?
I'm, I'm with her.
Okay. We've got another opponent coming.
Hi, I'm another resident of Stone Creek. I live right down the street, in the circle. My name is Milana Reese, and I live at 5408 North 160th Avenue Circle. We're also, myself. That exits that school?
I just turned your mic, come on.
Oh, okay. There's a significant amount of traffic that exits that Fort Street exit currently, and Fort Street is a major road that is built and made to support that. Just in response to your comments around the flow of traffic. We live in that circle that, and I'm sorry, I don't have the map here, but when you exit directly into, thank you, into the neighborhood over here, there's a circle that comes down this direction. We already face a significant amount of traffic from people just not knowing where they're going. So they circle around the circle, and it is our belief that if there's exits here, in order for people to avoid the backup that's going to be created along this road here, they are going to start going into our neighborhood and using that small street area, not going down the big street area, in order to get onto Fort Street. There are not traffic controls, except for a stop sign at this point right here, which I would make the assumption. There are not traffic controls except for a stop sign at this point right here, which I would make the assumption that there would be a stop sign at the exit point here. But there are no additional traffic controls to help mitigate or control the flow of traffic. And uncontrolled traffic is going to end up turning into chaos for us homeowners who live in this immediate area that would be near where the exit is being moved. We already face a lot of issues with regards to events that are held at the school after hours. So fall sporting events, football, soccer, things like that, in which we have a lot of people who are attending those parking off of the school property onto Stone Creek easements. And it creates a safety liability when people are crossing back and forth on that street. There's no lighting on the street to help support. Yes, there's lighting on the football field, on the soccer field, but there's nothing there to help support additional safety that's needed when you have that type of traffic moving in that area. And then to change that, this area into an actual street that would flow traffic outwards, we're extremely concerned with that, that taking place.
I'm sorry, what, you think the traffic from the, from the schools will, will be going into your neighborhood? Or do you think it's people from your own neighborhood that are gonna be using that to get to their homes?
It'll be a combination of both, but what I am concerned about is not the people in the neighborhood. I'm concerned about this traffic from the school. A lot of the kids within the neighborhood go to schools across the city, whether it be OPS, Concordia, Elkhorn, Millard. They, the, the kids go to a wide variety of schools. The traffic of the neighborhood is not really our concern. That's not what's, you know, bring, being brought forth right now. It's the traffic directly related to the school.
So, so why, I'm, I'm, and I'm, I'm just listening. I'm trying to try to understand.
Absolutely.
Why, why would somebody coming down Fort and take a right instead of into that original entrance, take a right and go down that street and then go into your neighborhood rather than just to loop back into the school and go into the parking lot?
Because there are other extra exit points through the neighborhood if you drive through the neighborhood, so.
Where would they go?
An expanded, they might either come around the circle to kind of loop through and circumvent waiting in line. They might take a right and go down to the next.
I don't think they'd be able to circumvent going in line because then you're gonna make a left and you're already, you're already in line.
You could potentially go back out to the traffic or, there might be parking there. I'm, I'm not sure. But if you come into the neighborhood and you take a right, there are exit points further down Fort. There are exit points further down one hundred and fifty-sixth, which I don't believe, those are not represented on the map. But there are other exit points from Stone Creek and the housing, the residential area that's back here.
You think more so when they leave school or events?
When they leave.
Not really when they're coming in because they're just going to the school.
Right. When they come in, I'm not foreseeing much concern there. It's just when they're, well, when they come to the school, they have to exit the school. If you're doing drop-off, you essentially are dropping your kid off and you're moving on. So anytime.
Live on is a parking lot at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Right.
Every day, right? It's a residential street. People come to pick up their kids. That's where they park. They walk from Kiwett, drop the ki, get their kids and leave, right? But five minutes. That's all it is.
I think the distinct thing about this compared to so many other places and compared to the plan as it exists right now, you've probably got six times as many spaces along the, that new road that they're putting in for the traffic to, to move and get out of Fort Street. Right now, it's a hazard. It, it shouldn't be there. There should never be any stacking on Fort Street. That street's never gonna do anything but get more busy. And so ultimately, that's gonna be closed no matter what. And so this is, this is a way to move it, like most schools, it's out of a neighborhood. It's not out of a main thoroughfare. But what you have here is so much more distance in there to handle that traffic compared to anyplace else I think I've ever seen. I don't know how many schools you've looked at at Millard, but.
A lot.
A lot of them. And.
And they all have some same problems, right?
They all do. They all do. But this, this should be, I would say, of all the ones I've seen, probably the least problem for the neighborhood that I've ever seen.
And I can appreciate that, but as a homeowner, that reality doesn't, you know, always translate through to us. Does the city?
I can give you any kind of assurance. My property taxes, my property value went up about fifteen percent this year, even though that we know that it's a parking lot at, at three o'clock in the afternoon. So I don't think it's gonna have any impact. In fact, it shouldn't have any impact on your property values. So I don't think that that, that's anything to worry about.
Well, does the city have any planning towards traffic controls around this area then with it moving off of that main fort?
Yeah, we'll bring Ryan.
We're gonna bring Ryan.
Okay. So that'll be addressed during that?
Yeah.
Okay. It does not, you know, what I've heard so far does not ease any of the concerns we have around it. We're still definitely opposed to that exit point being moved there. We'd like to see some additional consideration. And I guess the other question, will this, will the, will Ryan be able to also identify what's going to take place here? Or is there ever going to be a change with what happens on one hundred and fifty-sixth street?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think hearing that information would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do we wanna have Ryan come down first or have, Ryan, would you come on down? Ryan, could you hear all the concerns?
Yes.
Will you address those now?
Yeah, Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. So first of all, with regards to the traffic study, it's staff recommendation that the applicant provide for all improvements identified in the final approved traffic studies. So we did receive that late last week. It does take some time to, for the various staff members to review that. So we have a way of conditionally approving, if the board sees fit, to approve today with that condition where we can place a CO hold on the backend to ensure that any improvements that end up being identified in the traffic study are provided for by the applicant. So the kind of things that, that may result from the traffic study recommendations, things like the extension of turn lanes. Point here on the exhibit. Things like the extension of turn lanes on the approach here to Fort Street, potentially extension turn lanes on Fort Street itself. It'll look at whether or not traffic signals are warranted at this intersection here at one hundred and fifty-eighth Avenue, excuse me, in Fort. So that, you know, is certainly a concern of staff as well as, is what happens to the change resulting from the relocated access as well as the expansion in the school and the increased number of trips that we would expect to see. With respect to the question, it is a good question, one hundred and fifty-sixth street. So just taking a step back, the site as it exists today has a direct access to one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty-sixth street here and down here on Fort. That is a, kind of a grandfathered existing condition that predates the city's current policies and standards with respect to site access. If, if this had come in today, we would not have allowed any driveways to either of those two streets. But they do exist and so we wanted to take the opportunity to try to improve the onsite stacking, which you guys discussed during the testimony. We wanted to try to remove at least the, one of the accesses and it was deemed, because of the proximity to the front door, there's more benefit to removing the Fort Street access. And we really were responding to the site improvements. And if, I don't have an exhibit that shows the overall site, but this is roughly what you see on the screen there is the southern half of the site. They're not doing anything on the northern half of the site. It's not inconceivable in the future if they come back and bring a significant expansion into that part of the site. At that time, I, I would speculate that it would be a condition of approval that we revisit the one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty-sixth street driveway at that time. Maybe remove it at that time and, and take it up there to the north where there's a public street at the northeast corner of the site. That being said, we are recommending that they construct sidewalks along their one hundred and fifty-sixth street frontage. That's something that did not take place with the original approval of the site. So that'll get at least the pedestrian environment improved along one hundred and fifty-sixth street. The other question relating to that access there, again, going back over here to one hundred and fifty-sixth street, what happens to that long-term? Absent any project, like I said, that may come in on the north, that access will remain in place for the time being. Upon future improvements to one hundred and fifty-sixth street, a median will be placed restricting that to a right-in, right-out only access. So for right now, it's, it's not ideal that there's no turn lane there. We do have a project in city code identified and it's called ASIP arterial street improvement program. We have one project first on Q Street, one hundred and ninety-second to two hundred and fourth. It's currently under design and we have approximately ten million in the fund right now. So we're getting close to where we'll be able to construct the Q Street project. The next project in city code after Q Street is one hundred and fifty-six between West Maple and Fort. So there will be some improvements here in the, in the foreseeable future. It's, I, I don't have a, a firm date, but it could be as soon as twenty twenty-eight, somewhere in that range where we're out there able to be widening on fifty-sixth street. And that's the time where we would then identify how far the median would extend here in both directions. So I, I didn't catch that it was ever mentioned during the testimony, but just to point out, if we weren't relocating the driveway over here to give access to one hundred and fifty-eighth Avenue, then upon the future improvements to the intersection here, both of them would be restricted to right-in, right-out only. There would be no full movement access essentially to the school and I don't think that's necessarily a good thing. So we understand the concerns of the neighbors. We, we have to balance everything and ultimately, this, this does come down to safety along Fort Street where we have the highest speeds and volumes. This is not, I, one hundred percent in compliance with current standards, but it gets it a lot closer. I, we feel it provides benefit to the school. A lot of times when we talk to principals, they, they appreciate having more control, more room within their site to control things. You know, and certainly that, like you mentioned, there is a lot of more, a lot more stacking offered by the proposed site. So with that, I'll, I'll pause there. Are there any other thoughts?
Can you just remind me?
Sure.
That's just one lane of traffic east, I'm sorry, north and south, two lane?
It's, it's two lane until you get down towards Fort Street, yes.
Ryan, there was a comment about the traffic study not accurately reflecting the golf course. Now, I know there's not an entrance to the golf course off of Fort Street besides the maintenance drive, which I would expect is very rare as far as traffic from that. Can you comment on that? Does the traffic study, you know, does it consider, you know, the intersection, the site?
Yeah.
What it looks at?
We could do a couple of things to look at that and I appreciate that feedback. We can look at historic counts. I don't know if we have one or not currently at one hundred and fifty-eighth Avenue and Fort, but we do certainly at one hundred and fifty-sixth and Fort. So we can compare historic counts, maybe see if there's seasonal variation and, and there's ways if we do identify that, that we could assume a growth and just add those trips and have them reanalyze the intersection.
Ryan, that Stub Street where the two families both talked about where it's going into the neighborhood. It's always been a Stub Street, always meant to connect up to a street. Would you talk about designing a city and connectivity of streets and why we have those?
Are you talking about the driveway approach here?
Yes.
Well, that's more of a, a design feature that seems pretty clear as contemplated as site access back when they constructed the street. I, you know, I don't know that, why they would put an approach there if it wasn't anticipated to ultimately be tied into. So I don't have the case file or, or documentation of what happened when this was originally approved. I don't know if there's a, a plan for future expansion that included access there, but we always have to respond to projects and try our best as staff to recommend things that bring them up to compliance or as close as we can to compliance with the master plan and with city code. Development is slow. It happens slowly over time. People get used to conditions that are intended to be temporary, conditions even if temporary ends up being years or decades. There's, there's only certain limited things the city can proactively go out and enforce and do and change. And so for that reason, it's important when we do have the opportunity as projects are submitted to the city for review that we do our best to bring them up to comply with the codes and the master plan. I, there's similarity. I mean, some, at some point in the past, someone planned on an access there and we're just kinda carrying that out now, yeah.
Well, and I think it, you know, just to jump in here, you know, the idea of the master plan having three through routes at the quarter mile, half mile and three-quarter mile, it's a little unique here in this site because of the golf course, but, you know, past efforts still do have the two connections to Ford at basically the quarter and the half mile. You know, and it does their best attempt. Like I said, it is challenging when you have golf courses, but, you know, I think some of the questions relate to that and overall connectivity with neighborhoods and tying into those, you know, what we do a better job of limiting those access points to those higher speed arterials. And, you know, there are certain neighborhoods, there was one that came up that case was laid over, you know, Harvey Oaks neighborhood that was adjacent to a project. And if you look at the aerial, there's sixty cul-de-sacs perhaps and it's just a very inefficient model as far as street maintenance, as far as connectivity. We definitely don't do that. Now, there's a cul-de-sac here, you know, in the neighborhood and, you know, there are definitely occasions of cul-de-sacs. But as we've developed and, you know, in the last fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, we've done a better job of making sure those connections from neighborhoods and, you know, adjacent sites, whether it's a commercial property or in this case it's a school. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
From the applicant, was it Zach?
Yep.
Did you wanna come up and add anything? I think somebody was talking about maybe some landscaping, a buffer over in that area that we were just talking about that connects up to the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, that is something that we can look at. We will wanna be cognizant that that is a turning movement and we wanna maintain visibility in and out. And so we can, we can take a look at, at what other possibilities are there. I, I guess two other quick points too is, is one, we are offering internal sidewalks as well to the school, connecting over to the neighborhood. Again, that connectivity for the students and anybody walking from the adjacent neighborhood. And also we are providing additional parking internal to the site. And so when we're talking about game days and athletic events, we're, we are trying to pull more of those cars into the site itself again with adequate queuing, adequate space to park so that we hopefully mitigate some of the concerns of people parking on that drive. So one of the comments we received was there's an existing gravel lot to the north here and so we'll look at paving that. We will be between three hundred and four hundred spaces, again, dependent on how our final numbers come out. But we will exceed what we are required to have based on the number of eleventh and twelfth graders and full-time staff.
Do all your classes begin and end at the same time?
Uh, no, sir. We'll be going to a staggered start.
Name and address.
Robert Cooksey, one four seven one four, Crown Point Avenue. We will go to a staggered start and dismissal next year. We'll be at a ten-minute stagger for grades K to five. Ten minutes later for grade six to eight. Ten minutes later for grade nine to twelve, both at the beginning of the day and the end of the day to try and benefit the, oh, excuse me, the traffic flow coming in and out of the school lot. We've already notified parents of that.
And Mr. Cooksey, and one thing we haven't talked about is maybe the school's own policy about how traffic is regulated and the instructions are gonna give families and students. It might give some issues to the neighbors if they understand a little bit about that mentality, that internal policy as well.
Right. So we know that our grades K to five will be picked up on the north side of the building at the new academy entrance. So none of those students are driving. They'll be parking out back for the youngest kids who have to be strapped into a car seat to drive, to go legally. So that will happen there, but the natural traffic flow is to go out and exit right on one hundred and fifty-sixth street, not to turn back around to go out. I can't say nobody will ever do that, but we're creating a natural flow and we have staff out there at the end of the day to assist with that. So that's it. That would be at the end of the day, say at three o'clock. At three-ten, everything moves to the other parking lot, our junior high and then our senior high at three-ten and three-twenty will be picked up at the end of the day on the south side of the building. And then they would have to use the new road that's going in, which is essentially three lanes ride, wide running north to south. And then they would have an option at the roundabout to either exit to the right to one hundred and fifty-sixth street or to exit to the left to one hundred and fifty-eighth. How we, how we talk to parents about that probably depends on what we learn about the one hundred and fifty-eighth street area. If it would happen to have a light at it, it becomes a much more attractive and usable spot for students to exit at from a safety perspective. But again, they have the option to go out the one hundred and fifty-sixth street side. So we'll wait for a little more information before we get specific with that.
But it's reasonable that neighbors' concerns will be taken into account when formulating that internal policy. But it's reasonable that neighbors' concerns will be taken into account when formulating that internal policy?
We understand. Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out a couple of items. You know, whether it was Zach or Ryan, discussed new sidewalks and connectivity. One of the recommendations to make sure that the new access drive does have a sidewalk from One Hundred and Fifty-Eighth Avenue into the site. There will need confirmation regarding the wall material compliance with the MCC overlay district. So, you know, this is a major amendment to the conditional use permit. So the planning board does have the ultimate authority on the conditional use permit in the site plan you see. But the MCC overlay, which is only a benefit to the neighborhood and neighbors, you know, that will proceed to city council, just that specific item. But what that does is, as you know, it brings into a higher design requirement as far as building materials, increased landscaping and the such. There are a few landscaping items that will need to be finalized and updated with the landscaping plan. You know, Zach had mentioned that they can look at additional landscaping, perhaps west of that new access drive to help buffer, I guess, some of those adjacent single-family properties. The code due to the residential zoning does not require a specific buffer yard. If the board felt inclined to, you know, add a requirement, you have that right. But, yeah, Zach is correct. We want to make sure that the site triangles and access, that that's not posing a danger. There is a code requirement that would require screening, whether that's in the form of low shrubs or potentially fencing so that headlights, if you're leaving the site, you know, and you're traveling west on that new access drive, so headlights potentially shining into the neighborhood, those are shielded with screening. Now, that can also be met by grades potentially. And I see that the site does slope from the school site up to the neighborhood. So we'll have to analyze whether, you know, the grade changes that are present and that'll be there with that new access drive or if there is specific screening that is required. So I just wanted to point a few of those items out. Zach did mention the gravel area that will need to be either paved and brought into compliance for a parking lot or removed and replaced with sod or other landscaping. So unless you have any specific questions, I don't think I have anything else. I'll read the recommendation, but you can definitely keep the conversation going if you see fit. Approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R four district, subject to the ten conditions in the report.
Any additional comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approval for the MCC overlay district and approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R four district, subject to the ten conditions outlined in the recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote. Yes. Yes. Thank you all for coming down. Agenda item number ten, case C three dash twenty-three dash forty-six. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of City of Omaha. Request approval of the Leavenworth Lofts TIF redevelopment project plan. Location thirty-six twelve Leavenworth Street. Don, you usually don't have to wait this long.
Yeah, usually. That's all right. This has been interesting. If I can have the map up, please? Okay, excuse me. Leavenworth Lofts TIF project is located at...
Do we have, I can't hear his microphone.
Are we working?
Does it work?
Better now?
Is it?
Okay. Let me just adjust a little bit, maybe. Okay, project site is located at thirty-six twelve Leavenworth. It's immediately adjacent to large Conrad Apartments development. This will be a new construction project of a four-story apartment building with twenty-four units. Be three levels of apartments on top of one level of parking. Twenty-four units total. About half of those will be market rate, long-term, you know, monthly rentals. The other half will be VRBO rental units, basically kind of a short-term overnight type of rental arrangement. Parking, the structure will have parking on the main level inside the building with eighteen stalls. The access to the site is off the back from the north, from an alley. There'll be some alley improvements. This project is in the urban core mobility plan area. So there will be a contribution of TIF proceeds into the streetcar system. The developer is thirty-six twelve Leavenworth LLC, managed by Charlie Sullivan. The total project investment in the neighborhood is about seven-point-six million dollars. They're asking for nine-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars in TIF support. This project meets the required criteria of the TIF program. It's been approved by the TIF committee. It's an appropriate land use for the area, complies with the city's city master plan goals. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Board members. Bob Griffith, one-one-four-four-zero, West Center Road, here on behalf of the applicant. Charlie Sullivan is also here today and supportive of this project. First off, I would thank Don for his help and guiding this application through. He's been always been great to work with, so I appreciate him and his presentation today. I would add only that with, he mentioned VRBO with the Med Center proximity. That's, I think, a very viable option for half of those units with traveling nurses or those visiting, those in the hospital, as well as the option for, say, Berkshire Hathaway or other events in the City of Omaha. It's a good use, I think, of part of that, those units. It's a tight little spot. I think this is a really good use of the current space. Charlie was able to meet with the Blackstone Neighborhood Association and have a separate neighborhood meeting prior. Only received positive comments is my understanding. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Twenty-four units. Where will other people park? Or do you foresee this as, you know, people not having cars or...?
I think there'll be a portion of that certainly in that area. I know there might be, I'm not sure if there's street parking along that. But I think moving forward, at least with some of the units being temporary, not continuously rented, I think that that number is adequate to support those units in our eyes.
Do the VRBO tenants, would they get access to parking if they needed it?
I'll try to come up and maybe answer that, actually.
I'm gonna need your name and address, Rob.
Charlie Sullivan, one-one, excuse me, one-one-five-one-six, Mercury Hills Drive. Sorry, I got a little cold today. What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Do the VRBO tenants, I think there's six total units that would be rented out for VRBO. Do those residents get access to parking if they needed it?
If there's parking available, so we've got eighteen, actually nineteen now. We've got nineteen stalls and twenty-four units. So, and other twenty-four, we can do twelve and twelve. So twelve VRBO and twelve long-term rentals. So certainly of the nineteen, if twelve are taken, they're all one-bedroom apartments, so we can just pay one stall. So the extra stalls from twelve up to nineteen, seven would be available to VRBO. To answer your question, long-windedly, yeah.
And parking is it, garage parking, is that right?
Yes, controlled access from the alley.
And it's currently on the way to council for the TOD zone, is that right?
Correct.
So theoretically, parking could be less potentially with TOD, Eric?
Yeah, so with the TOD two rezoning, that brings into a fifty percent parking requirement. Whenever you have apartments, there's a different ratio, whether it's efficiency, one-bedroom, two-bedroom. I don't remember offhand what the required number is. But yes, you need to meet fifty percent of that with the TOD zoning. And there was no PUR for this project, so it was all compliant with TOD codes as far as the first initial preliminary glance. Of course, we'll have to review it during building permit time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? Debbie, we have a motion. Will you please record the vote? Yes. I think we're at agenda item number twenty. Is that correct? Agenda item number twenty, case C eleven dash twenty-one dash three thirteen, C ten dash twenty-one dash two twenty-eight. Applicant Uptown Properties LLC, request rezoning from R six and R seven to R seven with approval of a major amendment to the plan unit redevelopment overlay district. Location southeast of Thirty-first and Marcy Streets. You hear from the applicant, please.
Kyle Hazy with the NA Consulting Group, one-on-nine-on-nine Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, along with myself, Mike Carter. The developer's attorney is in the audience as well to answer any questions. The question, the property that we are discussing today is located here on the southeast corner of Thirty-first and Marcy. This is Mason Street down in the south. And to give a little more context to the area, Leavenworth Street is located just here at a half block to the north. What we are, to get a little background on this site, I believe you guys have seen this project before. About two years ago, we started working with planning staff, and we were looking at the project as a whole as shown here in discussions with planning staff. We were working through some different concepts. In the end, we ended up, this project to the south, it was a PUR, R seven project that was approved by planning board in December of twenty twenty-one and then approved by city council in March of last year. We are combining our requests to revise that PUR to include this area to the north again. The area to the south that was previously approved has not been changed. We did have a neighborhood meeting on this project on February twenty-first. We had about six people in attendance. There are generally no, anybody in opposition of the project. Just generally trying to figure out and become self, become informed of what the project all entailed. The first project to the south that was previously approved, this is the elevation. This elevation has not changed. We have a three-story component on the west end of the project and then underground parking and then a four-story component for the rest of the project. And there's some undulation to the front of that building. Bring it some different shadows and effect to the neighborhood, so it's not one big wall. On the north side, we have the secondary project. So the building to the north has a total of eighty units. And then there's a project to the north, I'm sorry, the project to the south has eighty-eight units. The building to the north has a hundred and eight. And that's a mix of studio apartments, one-bedrooms, and two-bedrooms. We have on-street parking along the streets. We have some interior surface parking in the middle. And then we have the majority of the parking stalls, there's a hundred and seven below-grade parking stalls. That building to the north is a mix of, there's three-story component on the west side of the property. This will house the apartment clubhouse. Then there's the underground parking, which draws this particular area to about a five-story unit. But then as the grade goes up, the building then goes to a four-story component. This area of the building is a courtyard, which matches some traditional multifamily story, multifamily projects in the area. As you can see here, that's that cutout, providing some change to the front of that building and providing a landscape area for the residents as well. There's a total of one-hundred-and-eighty units, as I described earlier. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions you may have. Yep.
Site parking spots are there?
There's a total of a hundred and forty-seven, a hundred and seven of those being below-grade.
Hundred and seven below-grade, so onsite a hundred and forty-seven total. Yeah, and in a report, that represents about fifty-two percent, I believe, right?
Correct, yeah. With the relation to the TOD district, as, which is here on Leavenster Street, as was relevant to the case before that Eric had mentioned, that's the fifty percent. Parking ratio is what is usually required. And then with the streetcar project, that is about point-four miles to the north of the site as well.
Okay. So if you're at max capacity, assuming eighty-five percent, ninety percent have vehicles, I don't know if that's going to be accurate or not.
I don't know that.
Where would the rest of the tenants park?
There is some additional street parking within the neighborhood. And then we are also providing forty bike lockers within the parking garage as well.
Forty, I'm sorry.
Bike lockers within the parking garage as well.
Did you say that parking is first come, first served?
I do not believe, I don't know if they're going to assign parking.
No, they, we're not, they'll be first come, first served.
They're not assigning parking spots.
No, we're not assigning that.
So you won't, there's not an additional fee for parking?
Unless you want to park in the garage.
Unless you want to park in the garage, parking is also first.
I'm sorry, did I get approached?
Michael Carter, one-one-five-zero-six, Nicholas Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-five-four, on behalf of the developer.
Can you talk a little bit about the parking arrangements? Is it going to be first come, first served on the surface lot plus for the garage?
Yeah, the garage, I believe they will have an additional fee, which would be pretty standard in the industry. What? Yes, yes. And then the surface parking would be just first come, first served, regardless.
Any additional parking, basically people have to just find it on the street?
Yes, yes. And again, as Kyle said, the developer firmly believes that when they talk about the forty, you know, bicycle lockers, those are like full lockers. I mean, it's not bike racks. It is a full room where people, quite frankly, some of those bikes may be more expensive than some of the cars.
There was some concern in the pre-meeting about the neighbors surrounding the development and that they now have to fight for a lot of parking because of the parking ratio that has been accommodated here. And so it's just something that I don't know if you had engaged with the neighbors about at all.
Yes, we, well, we have engaged in them. And additionally, that is Kyle indicated, we were at, you know, the neighborhood meeting, and about six people showed up. They're all very supportive generally. Parking did come up, and I think they did like the bike, but specifically close to the streetcar. I mean, I think that the streetcar is a huge proponent or, you know, advocate to this. They firmly believe that that's going to be utilized heavily with these people. Yes, yes, they definitely believe that, as, so.
Everybody good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Eric?
Mike, if you could come back up, I'm sorry, I just thought of something. I know this is not the TIF application before us, is my understanding. That will be coming forward in future months or...
Yes, we intend to submit the TIF application very soon.
Do you or Kyle know the approximate cost of the project? And also, do you have a level of rents that you can share at this time? Or, I don't know if that's coming down later down the road, so I'm sorry.
Yes, I think that was going to be part of the TIF application.
Sure.
But I believe our costs are, I'm going to say twenty-six million, but...
That's fine.
I work on a lot of projects.
Just ballpark, yeah, yeah.
But it is a significant, I mean, the property and the TIF, yeah. And so part of the TIF will be in the district also, like we talked about.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I will double-check that, but I'm almost pretty sure it's twenty-six total.
Okay, that's okay, thank you. Yeah, so obviously, we had a lot of discussion in the pre-meeting about this site and this project. Obviously, the board shared concerns about parking ratio and levels. It's actually closer to Leavenworth Street than what I had said in the pre-meeting. I said a couple of blocks, really, it's only half a block from an area that, you know, could be supportive for TOD zoning. Basically, all the fronting southern properties on Leavenworth Street are in the TOD area, so this is just off. You know, as a department in the city, we have not yet modified and expanded any zoning code changes or zoning areas as it relates to the streetcar. But of course, we have the previously approved urban core housing and mobility TIF district in Influence area, and this site is located within the Influence area. And I know we're not here to talk about TIF, but there will be, you know, an application for TIF for this project, which would have a contribution to the, the streetcar system. And really, these are the types of projects and densities and developments that are needed to support the streetcar. So, we understand there's a little bit of concern with, with parking ratios. Hey, I remember when Steven Held came in, you know, a handful of years ago, and there was concerns about the parking ratios for his other smaller sites that you can see in that exact photo with the townhomes and the individual lots for sale. And I, I know Steven has transitioned more to the multifamily product, you know, but this is, it's a very dense neighborhood, including the work that was done with Urban Village, you know, dating back a, a number of years ago. And we currently have projects that we've recently approved along Leavenworth for multifamily and reduced parking. So, you know, we, we, I understand, you know, the concerns when you look at it, 188 units and the zoning code as written, which is a very suburban zoning code, but that would require 282 parking stalls. So when we analyze this and use a similar ratio to what the TOD would support, you know, that takes it down to being able to support the 147 units. Prior to that, there was more of a one-to-one unit to, to parking ratio that was kind of standard for a lot of areas redeveloped with PURs in, in Omaha. But there have been other areas, you know, I think of a few sites specifically on Dodge Street, that we have gone lower than that ratio, just because of whether it's the orbit line or other available transportation. And as a city, we need to continue to move towards that. And for us to be successful and take that next step and to utilize that, the redeveloped sites that we have in our city, you know, we have, we've talked about it. We have a finite area of growth out suburbia and, and out west, and some areas, especially southwest, we're up against that ridge line. You know, we have future growth area in the northwest part of our city, but really, we need to take renewed focus, and there has been, I think, a, a great examples of redevelopment in projects and sites such as this. So, you know, I understand the concern, but as a result of that streetcar effort, we, we talked a little bit about it, you know, as far as part of the financial model and being able to support that, you know, the densities that are needed for that, you know, transportation and development system, is, you know, we've identified blocks and, you know, within the, the core area as well as the Influence area, and, you know, this is exactly the type of project that, you know, does support, you know, the improvement and, and development of that streetcar. So, there are several modifiers that are related to the PUR, setbacks, impervious, maximum coverage, as well as a few others. You know, we are really appreciative of the development team and, and working with us. We think the breaking up of the, the northern building with the courtyard that Kyle had mentioned, just breaking up the massing of that building is an important component. So we're really pleased with where we have come, you know, with the several meetings that we've had with the development team. That being said, approval, the staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R6 and R7 to R7, and approval of the major amendment to the PUR overlay district, subject to submission of acceptable final plans prior to city council.
Any additional comments?
Eric, I saw a quick question. For the parking recommendation, the way that I read it in the recommendation report, it's based on the location and close proximity to the pending streetcar. If the streetcar wasn't even in play and we're still using the PUR mechanism, would we be okay with the parking reduction?
I think based on past history, without the streetcar going in, we would require some additional parking stalls.
Any additional questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from R6 to R7 to R7. Approval of the major amendments to the PUR plan, you have redevelopment overlay district, subject to submission of acceptable final plans, required for the request.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
I'm going to vote no, not because I'm against the project, but I just do have concerns about the parking being tied to the rationale for the parking reduction being the streetcar, and there's still a lot of, a lot of questions out there. So that's the only reason why I'm voting no.
Yeah, just a comment, Eric, you're a great ambassador for the city. Thanks for the comments, Eric. I appreciate that. I'd say that I do have concerns about the parking as well, but I'll go ahead and vote yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm similar to both of those, but I, I will vote yes.
Yes.
Yes. That was the last item on the agenda. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Were you too?
Bike room, seriously, it's like a whole 40, it's almost like a parking in the, in the, in the, in the urban, urban.
Are you here, were you here for this or...
No, they're just... We're just here.
Oh, just back, okay. Oh. Sir, were you here for, okay.
Hey, we love visitors. Thanks for coming down.
Okay. For the minutes for the pre-meeting and the public meeting for February, do we have a motion?
Sumo.
Sumo. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Debbie, please record the vote.
Yes.
Say what?